Thank you, ma'am. At this time, I call the regular business meeting of Franklin Township Board of Trustees before July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four at twelve P. M. And I would ask Pastor Womack if he would up in his prayer.
It would be an honor for me to do so. Before we do pray, can I say this, I think you guys are going to talk about it. National Night Out is August sixth, and we're excited about it. It's going to be a great night. Hopefully, everybody can make it, and that's just a way to bring the community together. We'll pray. Father, we thank you, Lord, for this day, and we thank you for our community, our township, Franklin Township specifically. Now, we pray over this meeting right now. Now, Lord, you would give us wisdom, knowledge, understanding. The Lord, you would bring unity within the community, unity within all of us here, that we would, Lord, open our ears and open our eyes, that we may see things the way one another sees it, but also, more importantly, Father, that we'd see it the way you see it. My Father, I pray for our trustees, our leadership here, that you would give them wisdom. And, Lord, may we always remember that everything we do, whether we eat or we drink, whatever we do, we do it for your glory. So, Father, we pray today that our actions, our attitude, our conducts and our conversations would be pleasing to you, and that the words of our mouths and the meditations of our heart be acceptable in your sight, oh, Lord. Blessed this time as you come together, we thank you, Father. We ask you to be with all of our first responders as they watch over our community, and, Lord, we ask you to watch over every branch of our armed forces as they watch over our country. We ask your blessings now upon this meeting in Jesus' name. I pray these things. Amen. Thank you.
Chief Arnold, will you give us some questions?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for what it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's justice, we give it to roll call.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes. All right, going on to old business, the presentation of the Anita Kaufman Award. Mike, we've got to take care of it, sir. We have submission for the Anita Kaufman Award that we decided on, and so I'm going to ask Steve to read what the person filled out on the award, and then we'll present the award. So, it's a questionnaire that they ask specific questions, and the person filled it out, and Steve's going to read our recipient is Mary Neemeyer. You're going to win the award this year, and this is what the person wrote in about.
Mary, okay. The specific actions and performances which Ms. Neemeyer has demonstrated during the year begin with the fact she has lived in Franklin Township for over fifty years. Ms. Neemeyer keeps Franklin Township Chief of Police informed of any unusual activity in an apartment complex in Columbus near her home. She has remained diligent in reporting the continuous issues with the vacant house next door to her due to squatters. She even keeps an eye out for lost family pets by calling neighbors and friends to assist in ensuring the animals are returned to their own. Ms. Neemeyer actively attends the bi-weekly Franklin Township Board of Trustee meetings and takes the information she obtains and shares it with her neighbors. Ms. Neemeyer's individual efforts have contributed to the reduction of criminal activity from her neighboring streets because of due diligence and communication with law enforcement. Her efforts in reporting unlawful activity near her home have not only been brought to the attention of the Franklin Township Chief of Police, but he has then shared appropriate information with the Columbus Police Department and Franklin County Sheriff's Office. Ms. Neemeyer's engagement in her community by mowing a neighboring business's grass provides a savings to the business and encourages beautification efforts to other neighboring properties. Ms. Neemeyer's efforts stand out from others in Franklin Township due to her courageous commitment to her neighborhood, which borders the city of Columbus. Ms. Neemeyer understands that criminals do not have boundaries, and if she can play a role in keeping her home and her neighbors safe, she is up for the task. Even though Ms. Neemeyer is a senior citizen, she is one of the few members of the community who is not afraid to stand up and report wrongdoing. Ms. Neemeyer is an advocate for when you see something, say something, and for that, her actions have made her neighborhood safer. Thank you, Ms. Neemeyer.
Mary, you mind stepping in here, huh? Step over here. I want to present you with this. On this day, July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, there's a resolution honoring Mary Neemeyer as the twenty twenty-four honorary recipient of the Anita Kaufman Award, whereas due to auxiliary efforts and dedicated work in Franklin Township, be it resolved by Resolution Number Twenty Twenty-four-Dash-one-one-three that passed on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, that Franklin Township Board of Trustees of Franklin County, Ohio declares Mary Neemeyer as the twenty twenty-four honorary recipient of the Anita Kaufman Award. Thank you.
There you go. We can take two.
That's all right. I take like thirty, and then I stop.
That's all right.
All right.
Thanks for everything you did.
I wanted to let you know. I'd already taken ten by the time.
Okay. Well, that's all right. We need you.
Don't we chief? At National Night Out, we will be giving her an award there.
Okay, yeah. Yes, sir. Yeah, we talked about, I talked to. Yeah, and I do want to say this also again, the township, what was it, what'd you guys call it, the water splash? I thought it was a great night. It was a great day. You guys did a super job. I want to thank Fire Department, trustees, chief, you know, you guys did a super job.
What was that called?
Yeah, it was a lot of fun, man. It was a great day. Yeah, it was a great day. It was a lot of fun, so, yeah, thank you.
For those of you who were great hosts, for those of you that do want to come out to National Night Out, we will be giving her another, we will be giving her a plaque that day.
Pastor, I think some people didn't realize that it was going to be wetter than it did if they got baptized.
Oh, man, it was really cool, man. I tell you, I was just, I was impressed. I was like, hey, I really, I told so many people, I thought, you know what, it was just, it was a great day.
Some of the big kids, meaning adults, decided to get.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it was fun. It was a good day. It was all right. I don't know what the other locations, how they turned out, but I thought at the church, it turned out, it was a really good day. It was a good day. Very good. Very, well done, guys.
So, there's one more part that goes into, oh, yeah, your award, Mary, is we're going to have a Christmas parade this year, and the date of the Christmas parade will be twelve fourteen, and we would like for you to be the grand marshal and ride in the parade. And we even have a special guest that made an appearance today. So, with that.
Ho, 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 how is everyone? How is Franklin Township doing? I received a call, Mrs. Cawston, from the Board of Trustees advising that all the little young children in Franklin Township are made the goodness this year, and they want to reward the community. They're wanting to hold a, ho, ho, ho. Want to get over the bazaars? They're wanting to reward the township with a Christmas parade, and maybe even the little young boys and girls, whatever, could come and maybe get a picture with me this Christmas. Ho, ho, ho.
We plan on doing that, too, sir.
Thank you. Is there any questions to me? The rain, you're used to this heat. We need to get moving.
You're good to go.
Thank you.
Thanks for making an appearance, sir.
Hi there, Franklin Township Presidents. Thank you. Ho, ho, ho.
Please don't forget about the community engagement on guessing on how many runs that we have between the police department and the fire department. We're going to be giving away a fifty-dollar Dairy Queen gift card. You'll be able to find this information, there's some on the agenda right there, and we're also going to post it on the video at the end of the video, so please, and it's on the website and many other places, so that should take us through what I have, sir. Okay, well, we have one legal part of this with the resolution. We've already given the award, so let's make it legal and just vote on the resolution.
Resolution forty twenty-four, number three, it's a resolution declaring insipid of the sixteenth annual Anita Kaufman Award. It is resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. Due to the extraordinary effort and dedication, Franklin Township, the Board of Honors, declares Mary Neemeyer the twenty twenty-four honorary recipient of the Anita Kaufman Award. It is resolved that this resolution shall be enforced and effective immediately upon its adoption.
I make a motion that we accept the resolution as written, and I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Hearing the second, I would add a call for a roll call vote.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes. Thank you. Moving on to new business. New business would be, I'm going to change the agenda a little bit and ask Brian Wingfield, Fire Department, to come up and have a platform.
Thank you, trustee. My name is Brian Wingfield. I'm one of the owners of the Ohio Business Company. We are a group of family members that own three dispensaries in the state of Ohio, and we applied for three more with the law passing last year to open up one of the locations. I am happy to announce it's over on Broad Street, forty-three-ten West Broad, and the state, we chose that as our, it was one of our first picks to have that as a location. When we did that, there was a lottery, we fell all, came down to our pick, and that space was still available, and we were able to choose that. A little bit about us, we're a family-owned business. We started back in two thousand eighteen. We got our first provisional license. We opened up in Kishaktan, that location there. We now currently have one in Pickwa, one in Wyandotte County, one in Canton, and then we'll have three more here in Franklin County, and this whole, and everything is taken care of from there. So, we'll be a medical and a recreational facility, and that's kind of the high-level rundown of it. What I'm asking for today is that someone from your organization sign off that there's no moratorium, that we're in a properly zoned thing, a properly zoned area, so that we're able to go through and turn that back into the state that says we are in a good spot to open a dispensary that we haven't picked somewhere that's too close to a church or school or daycare, a library, et cetera, rehab facility, one of those prohibited facilities, so.
This is the old Boston Market, too, by the way.
Yes, the old Boston Market. And I guess one of the things that is probably going to be good for the township is there's a fund that will take proceeds from all of the adult use sales. Three point six percent of the sales will come back to the township, and my understanding is you guys can use it however you want, if you need a new place car or things like that. It's, you guys can spend it however you want to. So, I'm sure there's a zillion questions that people would like to ask, and I'd just like to start meeting each of you at some point through this process as we go forward to answer questions. I'm sure the law enforcement's going to have questions. We've worked very well with the law enforcement at the other locations we've been in, and so that's kind of the short version, what I was trying to keep short here. I could talk to you for about an hour about this, but is there any questions you have?
No. For those that don't realize where the Boston Market is, if you could just, I guess that is a question, just describe where.
So, as you get off of two seventy on Broad Street and come back east, it's the second property in, like, it's the second building in, there's a Popeyes beside that, and then there's the Boston Market, and there's a break out of that traffic light.
Right from West LeMans.
Yes.
And right there at the Bob Evans.
Ross, yes, prostitute from those.
What, you just need us to?
Yeah.
Okay. I would entertain a motion for the board to, since there's no money, we can do a motion, right? Yeah. Intervene, I'll make a motion that we sign off on the letter for Ohio Cannabis, is that what you're going?
Ohio Cannabis Company. Our company name is the Green and Go To Dispensary LLC, we do business at Ohio Cannabis Company.
Ohio Cannabis Company, that we sign the letter of engagement saying it's okay to go there, it meets all the criteria, make that a motion, and I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Roll call, ma'am.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes. If you just give me the letter, I will be glad to sign it. I will grab a paper copy of it right here.
Ryan, I may have, is this what you said?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
When do you think you'll be up and running?
It'll depend upon planned zoning and construction. We have to be open in eighteen months. I would like to be open under a year.
So, with your other locations, like Kishaktan and some of the other places, a lot of people probably are thinking certain questions, people that are at home, so I'm just going to ask questions.
Okay.
If they, not here, they may ask. One, security. How, what do you see as far as security, because of the nature of the business, what type of people does it attract? Yes, you may, you may.
So, what I guess is being in the industry and what my preconceived notion of what it was going to be like.
Sure.
It ends up being, so this is coming from the medical side, we grew up on the medical side. It tends to be my parents' generation that shows up at the dispensary. It's older people, as you get older, you have more aches and pains, and this helps out with that.
Can you hand me another copy? I put the wrong date on it.
That's fine. And so, for security, we actually have lots of security. We ended up with a security system at each location that has the auto dial route that meets all the requirements there. We also have, there's many copies of this up here. So, we also have camera systems that the state can look in at any time, and so, and then we have a vault. We also do one of those inside the vault, which is like full-on, bigger than a safe vault, or bigger than a bank vault. Inside of there, there's a smart safe that all the money goes into, that our staff doesn't have access to. So, we really try to eliminate the issue of being a targeted place, where as a liquor store, you can go in and grab bottles or grab cigarettes or, you know, a little bit of cash there. We try to really reduce that, so there's not that issue. But there's cameras all the way around, there's, we hire an individual to, who'll be plainclothed to, you know, watch out for the facility, but for things that are, you know, different, we probably put half dozen to a dozen, Simon alarm buttons that are just, you know, somebody can reach under and just push without anybody noticing. So, we do take it very serious, and, you know, we're a non, don't put up a defite kind of location. It's product for money, and both of those can be replaced, and individuals cannot, so.
So, have you experienced any kind of, I mean, obviously, you're given hypnosis of what you put into it, and someone at home may think, oh, what kind of people is this driving that you need to do that? Obviously, nowadays, banks and different places, they do the same thing. But, so with all of your locations, have you had any type of incidences that you can kind of talk about, and what was the result of it?
The only thing that we've had, seen, we're close to this, is we had someone who had a mental health issue who was there, and it was that we needed, we needed professionals to come in and help him, and the law enforcement showed up for that. Besides that, an accidental press of the panic button. We, let's knock on wood, but we have had been very fortunate. What we noticed and what we've heard through the industry is that any of the real incidences happen after close in the middle of the night, when somebody comes in and does that. I used to run a video game store down the south end of Columbus, actually, over on West Broad, just past where we're going to be out there, too, and somebody climbed up the back of the building, holding on to the gas line, climbed up the top of it, went over there, dismantled the furnaces on top of the building, and came in through one of those vents, like Mission Impossible, for video games and a few hundred dollars. So, if somebody's going to try, they're going to break in, but they still have to get through a classified vault door, big cinder block walls with rebar and steel, and it's, yeah.
Well, some of the things nowadays that we've seen in our community or even adjacent to our community is probably heard at the bus station, what kind of clientele does it bring in? So, the reason I wanted you to speak is because this is recorded, and a lot of people watch this, and they may not be able to ask those questions because they're not here. So, I know you and I have talked on the phone and et cetera, but I just wanted to make that opportunity. Is there anything else you would like to tell to the community?
We're excited to be here. We think this is a great area, that we see the growth potential, and that's kind of why we're, where we chose where we were, is because we feel like there are areas that, over the next decade, it's going to have, you know, projected growth, projected improvement of the areas, so we like that. And actually, I think this one's going to have a lot of outside air.
And what is the hours of operation, seven days a week, holidays off, nine to five?
So, we'll probably push a little closer. It'll depend on the traffic of the people that live in the area and what they come to use, but we're not allowed to sell from nine P. M. to nine A. M. So, even if we did, I think what we'll probably do at our locations right now is ten to seven. We may push a little bit longer if the demand is higher, and that's kind of something we'll have to kind of feel out as we move through this, to see, is there demand? Sometimes after, after dinner, people don't go out shopping after that, and so that's what we find is that nobody's showing up, it's probably not beneficial to stay open. But if we do have business, then we'll probably stay open a little bit, but definitely not past nine.
So, Mr. Chairman, I know I asked a lot of questions. Do you want to open the floor for anyone that may have a question as a resident here?
Yeah, I'll open the floor for one question a person, if anyone has any questions. Looks like everyone's good with it. I signed it and put it in my business card.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
I don't have a real quick. He's got my contact. I'm heading to him.
Thank you. All right, moving on.
Patty Spencer. Can't say it's not so.
Well, I have nothing because the city of Columbus, their email system is shut down. Somebody opened up an email, clicked on a link, and it contained malware. So, they, nobody in the city can send emails, receive emails. It's affected the three-one-one system, it's affected the nine-one-one system.
I'm sure it's going to be helpful.
And it's disrupting?
No, I have nothing.
All right, thank you, Patty, for what you do. Appreciate you. Have you not seen the Sheriff's Department, so I'll be moving on to public comments.
Sir?
Yep.
First on the list and only on the list, less, is it less?
Yeah. What do you hear, sir?
All right. Nothing major, just a couple of things. I've been talking to neighbors and so on and so forth. One is the water. You know, my son lives in the city of Columbus, a mile away from us, and his bill's a hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and thirty, and he's got two young kids. Me and my wife by ourselves, with just sewer, is a hundred and thirty to a hundred and forty. And the reason is, is I called the county to find out, and it's because we do not have a contract. They did not put a contract in for that part of Franklin Township when they did all those sewers. And she says, so they can charge us the highest rate they can charge us.
I know that, Mr. Mazur, you may be aware of this, too, Prairie Township pays like double what you pay, and I'm going to go out on a limb, this is strictly my personal opinion, and it's not that of the board. From what I've seen, even when you go out towards West Jeff, where they get water, there's only Delphite, if I think Del, Delco or Del something supplies water in certain areas, and then you have the city of Columbus. If you are not in the city of Columbus, you are going to pay a premium, and you have no choice, other than if you annex your property to the city of Columbus. They're not going to tell you that, but if you obviously annex it to the city of Columbus, then that's going to go down. However, you're going to pay two and a quarter percent of your income for income tax. But I don't know, Mr. Mazur, if you were able to check into that to see, this is the first I've heard that we could enter in some kind of a contract, because.
Yeah, because, I mean, it's just that run over there off of Brown Road.
Yeah.
Where they did that.
One stretch.
Five, six, seven, probably seven, eight, nine years ago, when they did all that?
Yeah.
And that's why they're saying, they said, we're not in a contract with them, so that's why our bill is so much higher.
Well, I do know, and this is what Prairie is experiencing, the townie actually came in and did the infrastructure, and then, of course, the city is supplying the water. So, bills are higher for the folks in that township because they, not only are they paying for the water and the sewer, but they're also paying for the infrastructure. So, the townie is being reimbursed for bringing the.
The lines.
The lines, yes. So, I haven't heard anything with, like, Greenleaf. I'll be more than happy to ask if you.
Yeah, I mean, I need to ask a couple, I know some people that live over off of Richter now, and are actually awful little, and they're actually, they have city water to answer, and see if their bill's any, you know, because I know ours has got to be tied in with theirs as far as the sewer, you know, and it's all going to flow the same way.
So, I have sewer, and they charge based on how much water consumption comes from a well, whether you're watering your grass, flowers, and et cetera.
Exactly.
But I do notice what we pay percentage, however they, I'm going to call it by the gallon, and they pay by whatever, we pay more as well, so.
And that's what they told me when I called in, was that we weren't in a contract, and that's why they.
Yeah, I never knew that we could be in a contract.
And that's, and who knows? That was the only reason I mentioned it, was to see what's a possibility we could, it would have.
Absolutely. Because when the sewers came through many years ago, I've been to all the meetings and worked with a lot of people to be able to get on the sewer and et cetera, but we didn't have the water. We're allowed to, if there's water adjacent to your property, say, there's a housing developed behind you in the city of Columbus, and they have water, by law, you're allowed to hook on, you just got to pay the tap fee and obviously your water mill. So, it's just ironic that, you know, I'm paying three hundred dollars every three months just for sewer, strictly sewer. And how much is your water bill?
It's about a hundred and thirty, a hundred and forty.
A month?
Every three.
And that's with water?
No, no water. That was well.
I mean, that, you got well water.
We got well water, yeah.
Just sewer.
Yeah, because there's only, if I'm right, I think Richter, Greenleaf, Brownleaf, and Egan, they're the only streets over there that doesn't have city water.
Yes, I do a lot of watering, flowers, gardens, stuff like that.
I do, too.
So, you're cheaper than me.
Yeah, but I mean, it was just something, me and my son was talking, and, you know, he's like, oh, that's a hundred, well, how hard for you, and we're just paying for the sewer part, you know?
We'll look into it, because, I mean, there might be other parts of the township that are not up there.
Maybe, too, a lot of it could be, ours went in versus yours went in, was there a different possibility?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And that's, I just figured, I know you guys are the ones.
Absolutely, yeah.
Do something, not me.
Well, I'm glad you brought our attention.
And that's all I could.
Well, there's no way, there's no, you know, it's ironic that I always tell people it's important to come to a meeting because there's no way that we would have known this if you wouldn't have brought it to us, so, thank you.
Yeah, and then the other thing I had on there was about the trash, and, I mean, it's no big deal to me, just trying to help people out money-wise. I know my neighbor down the street owns a rental on Dyre, Grove City, and his trash pickup is twenty dollars cheaper than what ours is.
Wow.
Because their Grove City's in a contract with them. Now, I think when Township started, if I'm not mistaken, they were in a contract with them, but you had to use that service. Now, I'm not sure that everybody likes that, that you have to use that sort of group, but...
So, my experience with that, and when I first come to trustee, that was a hot topic and et cetera. A lot of people are like, well, are you going to tell me which cable company am I going to get next? We did save money to a degree, but then what ended up happening in the end is they ran all of the other companies out, and there was no competing, and the price slows sort of went up. And now, it's, there's Alpha, there's Local Waste, they're very competitive, and both are good service that I see.
Yeah, he's got, on our street, he's got Alpha, or not Alpha, but I think it's Ohio, we have Alpha, but he said it was twenty dollars cheaper for Grove City's pickup than it was for his.
And one of, and one of the reasons is, too, if we didn't go back into the consortium, was they were wanting the township to.
is they ran all of the other companies out and there was no competing and the price slows sort of went up. And now, it's, there's Alpha, there's Local Waste. They're very competitive and both are good service that I see.
Yeah, he's got, on our street, he's got Alpha, or not Alpha, but I think it's Ohio. We have Alpha, but he said it was twenty dollars cheaper for Grove City's pickup than it was for his.
Wow. And one of the reasons is too, if we didn't go back into the consortium, was they were wanting the township to pay for those that didn't pay.
And that's why I understand, I mean, I just...
That's a good point.
Asking the question, you know, just to see...
Just trying to give you all the information that I have.
And with the taxes, with the way, I mean, unfortunately, you know, if, because I know I seen where you guys, you know, got fired a lot of times, I ended up against police or fire. But, you know, living on Greenleaf, my taxes, if it ends up being the five hundred dollars a month, mine's gonna be seventy, four hundred dollars a year, along with sixteen hundred dollars a year for insurance. I'm gonna be paying, luckily, my house is paid for, but I'm gonna be paying a thousand dollars a month just to live here. That's no utility or nothing.
One of the good things about the levy for the higher, is called a township-wide levy. I don't know if you've been hearing, talked about it?
Yeah, I heard that they were trying to get Hollywood and then the apartments...
If the people pass it, everybody that has annexed their property is gonna share in that.
Yeah, and that's, you know, and I just, with everything else, with the taxes, how high everything is. And I mean, everything, everything's high. I just figured if we can save everybody twenty or thirty, forty bucks here and there.
That's nice that you brought that to our attention.
Yeah, we'll definitely look into the sewer.
Yeah, all right, thank you.
Thank you. And thanks for coming.
I'll be back, I'll be back.
Good, we like that. Moving on, Chief Smith.
Oh, you're a mister.
Sir?
Under updates, I wanted to talk a little bit about our internet security issue with, we have, I think, four fraudulent checks. Lindsay's email getting hacked. This could happen to anybody. I talked to Steve and Robin a little bit about this. And I think the township should look into something like LifeLock for all the employees to protect everyone's information. So, I wanted to open a little dialogue for that.
Are you guys familiar with LifeLock?
Yeah.
And then we have a meeting with, or Steve has a meeting with Brian Lindsay next week. He is gonna provide some information and also some quotes.
Who is this guy?
Or insurance broker?
Okay.
So, maybe it's something we should definitely consider.
Because I know that, I get these letters all the time. "Sorry, but your information has been, we found that it's been breached." You can call this number, they give you six months of it or et cetera. I mean, that is something that we definitely can look at too. Let's talk for Lindsay, that, you know, what is the cost associated with that? Is what is the benefit as well? To give you an example, just keeping your information, how far do they go? So, we'll need to know the whole rundown of how it works, all the balancing lessons.
And then, I know LifeLock is probably the best company out there.
Yeah, and they offer different plans. And some of the issues are, you know, what happened to Lindsay could happen to anyone. You know, once they get into your email, they could possibly trace it back to like your business job or anything, so...
Yeah, and with all the cyber taxes going on, look at city of Columbus.
Right, what would just happen would...
Yeah, a hundred percent.
So, depending on the cost, this is something, and then unions, I'm looking around. But, even if this is something that the unions are willing to, if we just do this as a perp, that they help pay too, that everyone, that we just, in today's world, we just have it just the same as we have dental or whatever insurance.
Or it could even be something like, you know, we have a half lot of maybe the tax.
Yeah, absolutely.
But, yeah, Mr. Mazur's good with it, looking into it, with insurance.
Well, I think you said that Brian was gonna bring in...
Yeah, Stephen and Robin have a meeting with him next, next week and ask Robin to reach out to him to see if, you know, he has some information, maybe group rates or something similar that could be offered to us cheaper.
Yeah.
We're happy to look at it.
Yeah, I would be very interested. And the other thing that I would ask, Mr. Mazur, because we're talking about this now, just as we have health insurance for the family, let's take, Jim, your wife may be affected somehow from your job and they got their information. Would it go for the family, you know, the adults in the family, that it would protect your spouses as well?
I think that would be a discussion.
I'm just, yeah, I'm just saying, when you have your discussion, see what that cost, you know, works.
Thanks, John. What else, Brian?
All right, a few stats. So, last Friday, the Franklin County DUI Task Force, along with, we had three officers on it, Kidwell, McClasky and West, did two different checkpoints, one on Georgeville Road, near Schapper's Lane, and then one on Broad Street. So, I'll read those stats real quick. Total vehicles in the zones, one thousand forty-seven. Total vehicles checked, two forty-nine. Total vehicles diverted, fifty-four. One DUI arrest made, twenty-six citations, twenty-two driver license violations, one vehicle registration violation, one child restricted citation, one open container, seventeen vehicles impounded, and one misdemeanor warrant arrest. So, I guess it was a productive night. Criminals probably thought that was my own lucky day.
Was that both, was that both locations?
Mine, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they were, they were, you did one for two hours and...
Yeah.
Citation breakdown from our speed trailer. Tried to designate where we're gonna, you know, where we did the best thing for our budget. So, within this month, twelve stops on Klein Road, seven citations, five verbal warnings. Frank Road, three traffic stops, three citations. Brown Road, eleven traffic stops, nine citations, two verbal warnings. Ray Avenue, four traffic stops, four citations. Harrisburg Pike, nine traffic stops, three citations, six verbal warnings. Hart Road, six stops, six citations. Wilson Road, six traffic stops, two citations and four verbal warnings. Georgeville Road, six traffic stops, four citations, two verbal warnings. With that said, we had a focus on Frank Road. So, a lot of these stops listed under Harrisburg Pike and Brown Road originated from speed detention on Frank Road.
Oh, yeah.
That's just the actual, where they were stopped.
Where they found the car.
Yeah.
Questions?
Thank you, all right. We have the speed trailer job?
Yeah, Ray Avenue and Industrial Mall.
I did have one thing, chief, didn't you? Weren't you checking into putting up the old trailers, maybe on dot gov or something?
Well, we were trying to sell it directly to another department.
Okay.
But, the department that had interest, I guess it fell through. So, I either have to put, I can put it out through a state website, kind of like a dot gov for agencies, to where any other agency can respond and we can sell it directly to them. So, that's why I haven't asked for a resolution.
I know we're cleaning up.
Yeah.
You know, it just came on when I drove over there on Sunday, so...
Yeah, thank you, sir.
Fire, Chief Arnold.
Just to speed write his business here, we did have a firefighter resign in two weeks. He looks back at August 2nd, moving on to build houses and leave the fire service all together. If I can have a motion to accept his resignation.
I'll make permission to accept his resignation. I would ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Roll call, ma'am.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And then to replace him, we have a young man named Evan Snyder. Can't get a pension physical until next week, so I gotta postpone hiring him until the earliest August 11th. But, my resolution pending him passing that pension physical right now.
Okay, will you read the resolution?
I have that for you, chief. You ready for it? Okay. It's Resolution 2024-100. It's a resolution authorizing the hiring of Evan Snyder as firefighter one for the Franklin Township Fire Department. Resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approves and endorses a recommendation of the fire chief to hire Evan Snyder, effective August 11th, 2024, as a firefighter one at an annual salary of fifty-four thousand, four hundred dollars and thirty-five cents, Protocol nineteen of the IAAFF, local fourteen forty-one collective bargaining agreement. Further resolved that all formal actions of the Board concerning relating this resolution were passed in a meeting of the Board and that all deliberations in this Board, any of its committees, that have resolved in such formal action were in the open in the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including Section 121.22 of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved, as the resolution's written, I would ask for a second.
I'll second it.
Roll call, ma'am.
John?
Yes.
Jim? Mike?
Yes, where does he come from?
He's a local kid, he's working part-time at a couple of central Ohio departments. We're excited to hear your word.
Are we finding, it seems like turnover is down, we're not reading as many as these, but is the market out there of finding good candidates starting to be a little easier?
I feel like statewide, maybe, not particularly for us because of what's upcoming this fall and the uncertainty of levy. I don't have any doubt that we will pick up if this levy passes.
Well, just nationally, just two years ago, it was so difficult to obtain a new person because it was, everyone's trying to help the other person to get people and it was pricing the job out totally. And I didn't know if it's starting to...
I think it's balanced, so I think it's, I don't think that other departments are having as much trouble as they did, but this hiring pool is still very small.
Sure.
I think most departments are still operating short staff, just waiting on the candidates to come in because they aren't getting through school and they're coming along, it's just a matter of...
The person leaving, he was with us three years?
Seven.
Has it been that long?
Six or seven.
Sorry to seem good.
And last item of business I have is I would like permission to sell the old chassis. Horton finally got our old mechanic to take the box off and put on a new chassis. And so, they basically do nothing with the old chassis except recycle them with no benefit to us. So, we asked if we could just have it back and we'll put it on gov deals, so we at least get a little bit of money out of it. So, it's basically just, if I can just get a motion for permission to put that thing on gov deals and then I'll come back with a resolution once we decide how much.
Sure.
Anybody got questions? Do you want to make a question?
I'd like to make a motion that we grant permission to the fire chief to receive the chassis from Horton in order to obtain the opportunity to put it on gov.deals, at which time, when an offer is made, come back for a resolution in the sale of the item. If there's no further questions, I'd ask for a second.
A little second?
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Anything else? Happy one, huh?
Make your go-kart out of it or something.
Last thing I just want to mention, with the Splash Day and such a success down at this end, we're starting to organize a similar event up on the north end, we'll have a couple of stops. I made some contact with a few people yesterday, so we're looking at either the August fourth? August fourth or 11th, I think is what we'll shoot for, depending on the facilities and the people who we want to host it. I've got good feedback so far and more to come on that.
Appreciate you looking out for us. Thank you.
Thanks for picking that up.
Yeah.
All right, Mr. Stevens, Road Department.
Only a couple of things I've got to put on the agenda for me to talk about. First one, just a little bit of a building update, and I think Mr. Mazur's gonna go more in depth on this, or just a little bit. But, tomorrow I'm actually meeting with the architect that Steve and I met with, who that two weeks ago. He came out, took some measurements and everything, and he's kind of put together a little bit of a drawing preliminary to kind of go over, so I'm gonna meet with him about one o'clock tomorrow. And then I'll bring all that information back to Steve and we'll go over on Monday. And then, like I said, I think you're going, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, you go.
All right, what we're waiting on is we have the survey that are coming in on July 29th to actually do utility survey, a little more detailed than the original survey he did a couple of months ago, which, those are needed by the architect, so the architect can actually see what will fit on the site, yes. What Jim's doing is, when he meets with the architect tomorrow, they're gonna have an idea, like an estimate, for what's gonna fit on there. What that'll do is help us accelerate the RFP process. So, once Jim and I get a chance to talk, I can start putting the RFP together so we can get ready, once we have all final details after the survey's done, to send those RFPs out right away to start getting bids in on the project. As you know, because we're on a short, short timeline. So, that's what's critical with at least starting this process. And then hopefully, once the RFP goes out, you know, it's up to us to decide how long we wanna wait to start bringing in the bidders, to basically interview them, to see who you're most comfortable with in the construction project. And I might as well just go into it, since you brought it up. The architectural fee, which I was gonna talk to the trustees a little bit from now, he sent me a proposal for his services of drawings and drafting and blueprints, is initially eighty-two hundred dollars, which in today's market is extremely fair. So, I'll ask the Board now for a motion to approve that I sign his proposal to let him start doing the work on this project. And then what I will need is appropriation from the IRPA funds in the amount of eighty-two hundred dollars to pay his bill as he progresses through the process. And if it is, if the trustees are comfortable with that, then I'll have a resolution for you the next meeting, requesting the appropriation of the IRPA funds.
You want to make a motion?
So, I make a motion, be resolved by the Board of Trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board gives authorization for Mr. Stevens, working with Mr. Leaser, to act accordingly.
Mr. Mazur.
Mr., yeah, Mazur. In facilitating and working with said developers and architect to proceed in accomplishing the one goal of getting a cost analysis for said building.
I'll second that motion. Roll call, ma'am.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Can you get the, Lindsay, can you get the appropriations for the IRP money for the next meeting so we can get this moving along? This is a, this is a time crunch. Okay, any...
Oh, I'm sorry, then the last thing I have pertaining to Jim is, and we tabled this in the last meeting, was the updating of his existing MOU. And at the same time, what we need to do, and we just found this out a couple, three, four weeks ago, he had two resolutions out there that were approved, basically for the same, for the same MOU. And then, in discussing with Jim and the state auditor, there was a, I'm gonna say semantics...
there was a, um, I'm going to say semantics with words, and the initial attachment that Jim had to his M O U, the title was comp time, but the wording actually addressed flex time, and the auditors are comfortable with that. So what we did was we took comp time out of the title, so to speak, of his flex time paragraph, and we added accrued flex time. So, there's no issue anymore with Jim accumulating comp time, the cashing out comp time.
They don't cash out comp time, you don't cash out.
And anything was flex time.
Yeah, cash flex time.
So there's no cash outs?
No, there's no benefits, this is just a word change.
All right, so that's.
Moving of hours, because, what, two years ago, the hours that ran that comp time, when the State Auditor Committee said that, you know, us salary people couldn't have comp time, had it been flex time, so Mary just locked those hours down, nobody ever gave any direction on what to do with it, so it's just been riding there. Well, I mean, sooner or later, you got another audit coming through, they're going to say, well, why is this just sitting here?
Comp time.
You just take it from comp and you make it flex, and it's, I mean, I've turned it in a couple times, it's comp time for a couple hours here and there, and then when I get it back, those hours have never changed, but it's been taken out of other things because it's not, it's in comp time lines that flex time, so that's the only thing we're just wanting to do.
It's wording, it's wording.
Go ahead.
Jim, just for clarification, so there's no cash out?
Oh, absolutely not, you can't.
And, and you can only carry from year to year an additional twenty hours?
I think it's with the M O U's, but these hours, that amount of hours, it just, it would have been laying there, you know, but that had been accumulated prior to the M O U this last year.
Right, okay, okay. So let me ask you a question, if I may, how, on flex time, can you carry over flex time?
Twenty hours.
Twenty hours?
Yes.
So, um.
And again, naturally, I'm, there's no way you're going to burn what's on there, so I'm going to lose a bunch of it at the end of the year, which I'm fine with that.
So that's where I'm getting at.
Yeah.
Knowing that you have how many now, that from when Mary was here, did you still have them on the books?
Your comp times, yeah.
Right, but I think when it goes over to flex time.
Then you can use it then.
Would you still be able to use that since that's been two years ago?
Yeah, because it's been locked down, it wouldn't, it wasn't diminished because it's, you know, it didn't pertain to the actual M O U. I'm going to end up losing the majority of it all.
Well, I understand, but what I'm trying to get at is not to take away from you, what I'm trying to get to is, once we move those to flux time, seeing it to M O U, and you lose it at the end of the year, and since that was generated over the last two years, is the State Auditor going to come back and say, we moved that to flex time, and now it's, you're using something from two years ago? Alls I'm saying is checking.
I, I get it, and we can check, and my comment to them would be, well, you locked it up, and how could you use it?
Right, I understand, but, but from the auditor standpoint, you have these years and this year.
Oh, yeah, I get it.
They may automatically go, that's null and void because of the year it was earned, not earned, but.
I had reached out to Mark Long about this, and Steve and I got a lengthy email back about it. Um, he was concerned about heads of departments occurring, like occurring anything at all, but this was part of, uh, what the Board had decided that he could accumulate at one point in time.
Right.
So what my office needed was the approval and the backing to move it from the comp time to the flex time.
Yes, so that would give him access back to it?
Yes.
And he could use it at that time to burn it?
Yes.
Or leave it.
And my concern was, would the auditors, would the, once we release it, being the fact that it was being held, would the auditors now say, yeah, but those, those have been two years hypothetically, is it going to hurt us?
No.
So you got forty years, or forty hours?
No, he never addressed that.
No, he did not.
So you know what I'm trying to say, right? Exactly. Because then, then the next time he comes in and it's like, oh, gotcha, because where did these forty hours come from? Well, we released them. They were different two years ago.
Yeah, we don't want you to have to pay that back.
Right, he did not even address that part, and I mean, we have like, what, a three-page mail back to him.
Can you address that part?
I would address that, just, and the reason I'm saying that is.
What are you saying?
I don't want them climbing all over you going, you used something that was two years old when your M O U clearly says you lose it after one.
And then having you pay it back.
But we had it tied up because of them, so.
You know, it's mainly, to me, it's about just getting the language changed, you get this resolution, and that way we're back on the books and everything.
And, and addressing Mark Long, I have no qualms in saying, semantics.
Yeah.
The title said comp time, the verbiage in, in the paragraph addressed flex time.
Yeah.
Let it go. Yeah?
You know, that's like, i- it's no different than one of these gentlemen being out, him being, being out on a major fire and working, you know.
Four hours.
Four hours on a working fire, or him being out on a shooting, or being on the scene of a shooting, like we had up on, that was a Sunday evening, that's outside of his work hours and work schedule, he had flex, I mean, it just, flex time to use that week.
So, I think we need.
You're up for a straight.
Pass this correctly, before we lose sight of our.
I have, I have a question.
Go.
So, I also talked to Mark Long, and so the problem becomes that he's, this is, you're stating two years, right? That this is basically since.
You said Mary.
Mary, so that's been over two years.
Two years.
So where this is going to fall in, and you can vote however you want to vote, is what he was making two years ago, and he's converting this time now, and he makes a higher amount of money now than he was making two years ago.
But there's no cash.
But we're not cashing anything out.
So there's no cashing out of money.
But when you, but when you take the time, correct?
He just gets two hours off.
Yeah, yeah, I'm just taking.
Alls you're doing is, like, say for instance, a lot of times we had our meetings in the evening, and he would work twelve to thirteen hour days, so then he would have flex time, he could come in the next morning two hours.
Yeah.
Late, and his salary still stayed the same.
Yeah.
So there's no cash value whatsoever.
And then, and then I would write it down on my phone sheet, flex time, or whatever time, that's what I use, yeah, there's no, there's no monetary.
Value, see, he's a salary person anyways.
I needed to make that statement in, so.
Good, okay.
No, appreciate that.
Rule.
Um, it's Resolution twenty twenty-four dash zero nine two, it's a resolution accepting James Steen's revised memo of understanding and rescinding prior resolution twenty twenty-two dash zero one three and twenty twenty-two dash zero two seven. Be resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, that the Board approves accepted revised M O U between Franklin Township Board of Trustees, Road Superintendent James Steen, effective immediately. This resolution rescinds twenty twenty-two zero two seven and twenty twenty-two zero one three. Uh, this resolution reflects the actual M O U concerning salary and benefits of the Road Superintendent. Be further resolved that this resolution shall be declared an emergency and be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption.
So moved as the resolution is written, and you're going to be checking with Mark Long on it?
Question and details.
Question and details on that. I would ask for a second.
I'll second, sir.
Roll call, ma'am.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
No.
And that's all I've got.
Must have signed it.
I think, yeah, I think so, yeah.
I just don't know that he's, he's been out.
I just don't want to make a mistake, so, it's going to pass anyway, and I'd rather err on this side.
That's very supply.
We will see what Mark Long has to say, because I think we made a big mistake.
Any else?
That's all I got.
Thank you, appreciate it, John. Fiscal Department. Looks like you got a few items.
Hold on a second, I do have a question for Jim.
Okay.
Um, I didn't realize he was done. So, the property, uh, on Green Leaf, the three properties, yeah.
We're working on getting pricing put together on that now, Ryan's finishing some of the stuff up on that, he was working a little bit on it while I was on.
Right.
And then I'm going to bring it back to the Board, but the situation we've got right there is, talking with the county, there's really, there's not a dire need to put the piping in, the piping is just wanting to be put in so they can mow it easier, so I'm just going to put the pricing together, bring it to the Board, and let you all make a decision.
And you sent me a text saying that, but I just want to confirm that.
Correct.
And then while you were going, I got with, I gave, uh, Ryan two addresses on Garland and you, for Mary.
We went down there, yeah, we went down there yesterday, actually spoke with the residents of their places.
Okay.
We got what we're on, we set this up.
Okay. Well, is that Green Leaf the one you and I looked at one day?
And I have a question for you, sir, I had it written down, and then we got into a big conversation. Um, I noticed on my way here, um, I said something to Ryan in your absence in regards to the property at, uh, Wilson and Fisher.
On the corner.
Right, on the corner, so it was cut, however, the amount of trash in that corner, are we able to send them a letter in regards to trash as well? Is that just, it's just, you couldn't do a hop sketch without hitting something.
Would that, um, that letter for trash fall under?
House Bill fifty?
Would it be a House Bill fifty?
Yeah, it would be a House Bill fifty, correct.
Okay, I didn't know, but would fall under what we've been doing with.
This is.
Okay.
Anything else for Mr. Stevens?
No.
Go ahead.
I got a motion to approve accounts payable, um, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board makes the motion to approve accounts payable from July eleventh, twenty twenty-four, through July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and twelve dollars and thirteen cents, from check number seven zero five two two to seven oh seven oh five nine four, and electronic vouchers, uh, eleven ninety-four dash twenty twenty-four through twelve eighty-two dash twenty twenty-four.
So moved as the motion. I'll ask for a second.
I'll second.
Roll call, ma'am.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Then I have a motion to approve payroll, uh, reports as written, presented on July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board makes the motion to approve payroll for pay period June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four through July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, in the amount of one hundred and eighty-seven thousand, seven hundred and sixty-five dollars and ninety-seven six cents, A C H direct deposits on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, electronic vouchers, twelve ten dash twenty-four through twelve eighty-one dash twenty-four.
Did you say ninety-six cents?
Yeah.
Okay.
So moved as the motion is presented, I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, and then I also have Resolution, Resolution twenty twenty-four one oh one, a resolution to adopt the annual road district tax mileage for Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, for the year beginning January first, twenty twenty-five, and to submit the same to the Franklin County Budget Commission, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, created, uh, a road district, Resolution twenty twenty dash one oh eight, compromising of all of the unincorporated areas of the township and, whereas due to creation of the road district, two point three five addition inside mill, mills have been available for use by the road district, and whereas the Board is of the opinion that it is necessary for the operation of the road district and in the best interest of the residents to authorize and to request levying of the two point three five inside mills available in the district from the Franklin County Budget Commission for the twenty twenty-five Franklin Township tax budget. Be it further resolved that all formal actions of the Board concerning and regulating to this resolution were passed in a meeting of the Board, and that all deliberations of the Board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action were meeting, in a meeting open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one point two one dash two two of the Ohio Reserve Code.
So moved as the resolution is written, and I would ask for a second.
I will second, sir.
We have any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call.
Uh, Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Then I also have Resolution twenty twenty-four one oh three, the resolution adopting the appropriation of A P R A funds for expenses related to the construction of the new road department building, be it resolved by the Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, that the Board approves and authorizes the, authorizes the appropriation of A R P A funds not to exceed forty thousand dollars, specific to the expense of the utilities surveys by Blue Church Survey in the amount of four thousand dollars, and low endic demolition contracts in the amount of thirty-six hundred dollars, or thirty-six thousand dollars. Be it further resolved that all formal actions of the Board concerning and related to this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the Board, and that all deliberations of the Board and any of its committees, that it resulted in such formal action where the meeting is open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one twenty-one, dash twenty-two of the High Reserve Code.
So moved as the resolution is written, and I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call, both ma'am.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And lastly, Resolution number twenty twenty-four one oh two, a resolution to provide supplemental appropriations number seven for the period commencing January first, twenty twenty-four, ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four. Now, therefore be resolved by the, whereas it is necessary to provide for the current expenses and other expenditures of Franklin Township, Franklin County during the year ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, and now therefore it be resolved by the Franklin County Board of Trustees of Franklin Township, Franklin County, section one, the sums that presented in Exhibit A, attached B, in the same, are hereby set aside appropriated for the several purposes for which expenditures are to be made for during the year ending in December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four.
So moved as the resolution is written, I would ask for a second.
Any, can we do questions?
Yep.
Um, so what is our budget total? Are we north of ten million?
Uh, no, we're not, we're like right there.
So, like, right at ten?
Just about, yeah.
Okay, nine something?
Yes, the, I sent you yesterday.
Yeah, I looked through that, and my question was, was there any others, like, for instance, any of the, um, state for grant money and et cetera included in that?
Uh, yes, everything was included with that, I did that along with Jeff, so we've been completely all right.
I was just wondering, because I know normally, and the only reason I'm asking, sometimes we're like at ten one, ten two, and we're just a little under, and I saw that, and I was like, hmm, okay.
And that, you know, that is subject to change with certain things that we may still have to.
Okay, that's, that's what I wanted to hear, thank you. With that being said, um, sir, I'm ready to second if there's no other questions.
Uh, Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And that is all I have.
So I didn't know if you had that nailed down, because I was like, wow, because we're going the wrong way.
No, because then we'll pick this all back up and we'll start going over it in detail in September, October.
So you're up now?
Yes.
Couple of questions for you, if you don't mind.
Sure.
Um, how are we on, uh, are we having any penalties or anything, um, in the last month or two, I forgot to ask last month.
Um, we have not, the only thing that did come through, and this is from before my time, um, this would be when Robin was on vacation last May, we had a, um, I R S penalty. Um, so this is from over a year ago, so from May of twenty twenty-four as of now, no.
Okay, and then, so you had announced, uh, at our special meeting last Thursday, I forget which one of you said, that her department is under siege, one of you said, remember, given her going into an investigation, do you remember that?
No.
Okay.
I, I don't know.
It was where, you know, her department was being attacked, we had four bad checks.
Yes.
And things like that.
Yeah, gotcha.
And so I know that fiscal department, because I've had people ask me what's going on and stuff, and that you guys have put in positive pay, so can you explain how positive pay works?
So, with the positive pay, we're working to shut down the one account completely, and we open a new account, so with that, um, we're still able to receive some payments that we would normally be getting, monitoring that account very closely, but we are actually very close to getting the old account totally shut down, and everything just going to the new account.
But, but positive pay, isn't that where you turn in, a- at the end of every day, every check you've written?
Yes, we approve anything that's coming through.
And they're only going to pay what's on the list?
Yes.
Okay, all right, well, I just want people to know that we're on it.
Yes, yes, yes.
Because I'm getting people ask me questions about what's going on, just like you said would happen, and then I've had two people now reach out to me.
We actually have stopped a couple of checks that way.
Okay.
I think that's how you found the two.
Yeah.
Because you had three or four.
We get, we send them over the checks that we were having going out, and so they make sure that goes clear. And then if any weird checks are coming through, they alert us right away, and then we either approve or deny, which we've denied twice too.
So is this in lieu of the fact that someone has the account number and, and are doing that? Or they need the account number off of any check?
Yeah, we can't even figure it out how they obtained this information. We know that, uh, the Med Account people have been hacked right before this happened. We have no idea, because the checks seem to get better and better, looking more mirroring ours as they were coming through.
Yeah, I seen the first one that came through, and it looked nothing like.
It was very, very plain.
There's only one signature.
Yeah. And then so the other ones that came through, they almost look identical to ours, not quite, but.
With this happening, and a lot of people listening at home, to the taxpayers, what does this cost the taxpayers?
Well, we had to order a new box of checks, but we had just ordered a new box of checks. Um, which he did give us a discount on that, but, I mean, we haven't lost any money. Any money that, yes, any money that, so that, that's all it has been was having to reorder a new box of checks.
Sure, so it's minimal that any checks that were fraudulent, Franklin Township residents is not responsible for.
Correct. Yes, we were able to stop them.
Good work.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, is that all you have for us, ma'am? I think so.
Yes, it is.
All right. Mr. Mazur?
Uh, thank you, Chairman. The first thing I have for you is, uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash zero one six. It's a resolution approving the obligations authorized by the township administrator between July tenth, twenty twenty four, and July twenty third, twenty twenty four. Where the Board of Trustees in resolution twenty twenty one dash one thirty authorize the township administrator to approve incurred obligations of ten thousand dollars or less on behalf of the township in accordance with section five oh seven point one one of the Ohio Revised Code. And where pursuant to provision in section five oh seven point one one A of the ORC, the obligations approved incurred by the township administrator must be subsequently approved by the adoption of a full resolution of the Board of Trustees. All formal actions of this board concerning and relating to the adoption of this resolution were passed in an open meeting of this board and in all deliberations of this board and any of its committees that resulted in such formal action or meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including one two and one point two two of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared an emergency, and shall be in force effective immediately upon its adoption. Uh, and again, it's a period of July, actually, July eleventh, twenty twenty four through July twenty third, twenty twenty four, in the amount of sixteen thousand four hundred and twenty-one dollars and forty-five cents.
So moved as the resolution is written in the attached document. I'd ask for a second.
I will second, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
The next thing I have concerns one of our police officers, Roger Myers. He was injured back in twenty twenty. The BWC contacted me and said that, uh, he is entitled to what they call temporary disability from his injury. Uh, on advice of Sedgwick, our third-party administrator that, that, uh, works with the BWC, uh, we came to an agreement that a settlement of sixteen hundred dollars for the injury again back in twenty twenty is satisfactory. It has no effect on the township's, uh, rating or premium moving forward concerning our health insurance and our BWC premiums.
Good. Um, you need anything from us today?
No, so I just wanted to bring it up to the board to let you know where, where, uh, that we, we, um, resolved that issue.
So all statutory, everything?
Everything's been bad.
Gotcha, okay.
That's why I brought that, just to make sure I had the figures right and the names right, all the, all the documentation from Sedgwick. The next thing I have, Chief, we're good, this is, aren't we, Las Galapagos?
Yeah, I, I did the background and sent it back to, uh, Department of Commerce.
Okay, um, this is just notice from the liquor control of a uh, transfer of a liquor license from General LLC located thirty-six eighty-nine West Broad to Las Galapagos LLC, DBA Las Galapagos at the same location. Really, again, all we need on this is, is if the trustees are fine with this, the chief did, did the, uh, the background on, uh, it just ends up we need a signature from our, from Lindsey, our fiscal officer.
Anybody have any questions?
No.
So Mr. Chairman, uh, so I make a motion that we accept, uh, Mr. Mazur's, um, reading of transfer of title for liquor license as written.
So moved. I'll second that. Roll call.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, the next resolution I have for you is resolution twenty twenty four dash one zero four. It's a resolution rescinding resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine eight and replacing it with resolution twenty twenty four dash one zero five. Be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of Franklin County, Franklin County, Ohio, that the board approves to rescind twenty twenty four dash zero nine eight and replace it with resolution twenty twenty four one oh five due to a necessary revision. Be it further resolved that all formal actions of the board concerning and relating this resolution were passed in an open meeting of the board and that all deliberations of this board and its committees have resulted in such formal action when, when an open meeting to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including one two one point two of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared an emergency, and should be in full force effective immediately upon its adoption. Questions?
What are we rescinding?
Okay. When we see the original resolution place a fire department levy on a valley, there was a, uh, a date that was incorrect as to when the taxes for the levy would be collected. The original resolution stated twenty twenty four, and it shouldn't have been twenty twenty five.
Okay.
And Mike, Mike had a question that he asked me the other day, how it just happened. Uh, it was just an error when we got it back to the law firm.
So moved as the resolution is written. I'd ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any more discussion? Hearing no more discussion, I'd ask for a roll call.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Okay, the next resolution I have is resolution twenty twenty four dash one oh five. It's a resolution to proceed with the submission of the, of the question of levying an additional tax in excess of ten million, ten mils limitation for the purpose of fire protection services pursuant to the ORC section five seven oh five point one nine I, replacing resolution twenty twenty four dash zero nine eight. Um, the total taxable value of the township used in calculating the estimated profit tax revenue is three hundred and seventy-five million, three hundred and forty-five thousand, three hundred dollars. The millage for the requested levy is fourteen point six, six mils for one dollar per taxable value, which amounts to five hundred and thirteen dollars for each one hundred thousand dollars of the county auditor's appraised value. The additional levy will be for a continuing period of time. The additional levy shall be placed upon the current year's tax list commenced in twenty twenty four to the collection in twenty twenty five. That's the correction. If approved by a majority of the electors voting their own. The territory where the tax will be levied is the unincorporated and incorporated area of the township. The township is located entirely within Franklin, Franklin County. Uh, it is soundly determined that all formal actions of this Board of Trustees concerning or relating to the adoption of this resolution were adopted in an open meeting of this Board of Trustees. All deliberations of this Board of Trustees and any of its committees have resulted in those formal actions were involved in open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including section one two one of the ORC. This resolution shall be declared an emergency, and shall take effect and be enforced from and after the earliest time provided by law.
So moved as this resolution is written. I would ask for a second.
I'll second, sir.
Any discussion? Hearing none, I'd ask for a roll call, ma'am.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Then the next thing I have for the trustees, I just wanted to give you a medical, um, update on Officer Troy Hale. He just received information from his physician that he will be off work at least until September second of twenty twenty four.
Now, Chief, did he come back to work and then he's back out again? Is that how that works?
Yeah, he was back for a couple of weeks.
And this is a non-work-related?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks for the clarification.
I, I, I'm gonna apologize ahead of time again. He's a long, he's a long resolution.
I mean, that's just a plug and address, you know what I mean?
And, 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 yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna give that a shot. Um, the first resolution is twenty twenty four dash zero one seven. It's a resolution declaring motor vehicles located at twenty-six hundred Plainview Avenue, parcel number one four zero 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 three five four nine dash zero zero, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, a junk motor vehicle provided for its removal pursuant to ORC five oh five point eight seven one. The board hereby determines that a motor vehicle located at twenty-six hundred Plainview Avenue in the unincorporated area of the township, which may be generally described as a yellow Chevy Impala, yellow truck, white Camaro, an RV, a blue Mini Cooper, a Chevy van, of all in a state of disrepair, missing one or more following parts such as windshield, wheels, windows, front end assembly. Its three model years are older, apparently inoperable, and thus justifies a junk motor vehicle as defined in section five oh five point one seven three of the ORC. The board hereby determines that it is investment in the township and its residents, that the board proceed under section five oh five point eight seven one of the ORC. The board hereby orders that the record owner of the property or the executor for the estate of the record owner or the lawful representative for the record owner, remove or provide for the removal of the junk motor vehicle from the property within fourteen days of the date of receipt of written notice of the passage of this resolution. Board authorizes the township administrator to provide written notice to the record owner, his representative or executor of the estate, and to the holders of lanes of the record on the property of the board's intention to remove or cause removal of junk motor vehicle from the property as provided in five oh five point eight seven one of the ORC. The board finds and determines that all formal actions of this board concerning or relating to the passage of this resolution were taken in open meetings of this board and in all deliberations of the board resulting in formal actions were taken in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, including but not limited to the ORC section one two one point two two, except as otherwise provided nearby. This resolution shall take effective, shall be effective immediately upon its passage.
So moved as the resolution is written. I would ask for a second.
Sir, I'll second that.
Any discussion? Hearing no discussion, I would ask for a roll call, ma'am.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Yeah, no, there was a lot in there that I'm glad I just hear that. That's three from one location. That would make some neighbors stopping.
Yes.
Can you imagine looking out your back window for years looking at that?
Yes.
Okay. Resolution twenty twenty four dash one oh eight. Resolution declaring motor vehicles located at twenty-four sixty-four Windwood Avenue, parcel number one four zero 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 three four eight seven dash zero zero, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. A junk motor vehicle provided for its removal pursuant to ORC five oh five point eight seven one. Board hereby determines that motor vehicles located at twenty-four sixty-four Windwood Avenue in the unincorporated area of the township. Uh, are, uh, models, three model years are older, apparently inoperable, constituted as junk vehicle is defined in section five oh five point one seven three of the Ohio Revised Code. Um, the board hereby terms investments in the township and its residents, that the board proceed under five oh five point eight seven one of the ORC. The board hereby orders the record owner of the property and the executor for the estate of the recorded owner or the lawful representative of, of the recorded owner, remove or provide for the removal of the junk motor vehicle from the property in fourteen days of date of receipt of the written notice of the passage of this resolution. Board authorizes the township administrator to provide written notice to the record owner uh, or the executor of state of the record owner of the board's intention to remove or cause removal of junk motor vehicle from the property as provided in section five oh five point eight seven one of the ORC. Board finds and determines all formal actions of this board concerning or related to the passage of this resolution were taken in an open meeting of this board. All deliberations of the board have resulted in formal actions were taken in meetings open to the public in compliance with the Ohio Revised Code one two one point two two. Resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage.
So moved as the resolution is written, I would ask for a second.
I'll second.
Any, um, discussion on this? Hearing none, I would, um, ask for a roll call.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yeah.
Excuse me.
All right. Ditto, ditto, ditto.
Yeah.
And hopefully this doesn't give me a big trouble. Uh, resolution twenty twenty four dash one oh nine, resolution declaring motor vehicles located at twenty-four ten Windwood, parcel number one four zero 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 five four zero four dash zero zero, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. A junk motor vehicle providing for its removal pursuant to ORC five oh five point eight seven one. A resolution declaring, oh, I'm sorry, resolution twenty twenty four dash one one zero. A resolution declaring motor vehicle located at one 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 four Eureka Boulevard, parcel number one four zero 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 three four five zero dash zero zero, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. A junk motor vehicle and providing for its removal pursuant to ORC five oh five point eight seven one. Resolution twenty twenty four dash one one one, a resolution declaring motor vehicles located at Eureka Boulevard, parcel number one four zero 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 three five zero one dash zero zero, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio, a junk motor vehicle provided for its removal pursuant to ORC five oh five point eight seven one. Resolution twenty twenty four dash one one two, a resolution declaring motor vehicles located at sixteen ninety-six Rosemont, parcel number one four zero 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 seven zero one dash zero zero, Franklin Township, Franklin County, Ohio. A junk motor vehicle and provided for its removal pursuant. A junk motor vehicle and provided for its removal pursuant to ORC 505.871.
And sir, that will be on three different, do they have different?
I was just wondering if he was gonna read anything else.
Well, I would like to include, the board hereby. The board finds and determines that all formal actions of this board concerning or related in the passage. Of these resolutions were taken in open meetings of this board and all deliberations of the board in resolving formal actions. Were taken in meetings open to the public in compliance with all legal requirements, but not limited to. The ORC section one two one point two two, except as otherwise permitted nearby. This resolution shall take effect immediately upon its passage.
So moved on these three resolutions, I would ask for a second.
I will second on all three.
Any?
Four.
Four.
Yes, sir, four.
I will, I will, I will make, I will move on the motion on resolutions of all four. Make a motion to be accepted as written, I would ask for a second for all four.
I second.
Is there any discussions? Hearing none, I would ask for a roll call vote then.
Jim?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure the wording was right.
Oh, absolutely. Don't want to do it again. Stay after school. I will not mess up, I will not mess up.
Let's go to Steve. Let's go to Steve.
Well, it's coming back.
Yeah. That's the important ones, right?
We've gotten so efficient up here, I, I must say.
Yeah, it's like, I'm done, my dust is clear, I can actually see the green.
Definitely different than when, two, than two and a half years ago.
And then the only other thing I have, I know there's been discussion about living in a home rule and the board suggested that maybe July.
It's a Friday.
Thirty.
It's the Tuesday.
Thirty.
It was a Friday night, I think.
That's a Tuesday, thirtieth is Tuesday.
The thirtieth?
Yeah.
Of July?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That you would like to hold in an open meeting. So the public could come and they had any questions, concerns about living in a home rule. We, we are really on a tight.
Right.
In, in fact, it, it may be difficult. To get it on Valentine for November, it can be tough. But you suggested that maybe we have an open meeting July thirtieth.
Will that give us time?
I, I, I don't know, because if you have the. At the board of elections on August seventh. But I've had, clearly, I've had a ton of discussions with Julie, our attorney. And it may be for right now, what the township wants to do, we may have the legislative authority to do it. But what we need to do is hear from the residents, what they want. There are tools in our toolbox that we can use, we haven't utilized yet.
So with.
As far as, as far as what, I'm sorry?
Well, for example, any parking issue. There, there are, there are township roads, so let's say, for example, somebody parks a semi on, I'll use Frank Road. I mean, if, if. That, that's not a parking lot, so, so the vehicle, we have the authority to make it move that, I'm trying to make this something. In a residential area, if you have a box truck parked on a residential street and it just sits there. They can't do that, it has to be a working truck. For example, box, box truck is parked on Ramford. If it's not putting up aluminum siding or it's not putting up gutters. We have the ability to have that truck move. We also have the ability to issue citations and fines.
Okay. So we, we.
So these are the things that are becoming. Not that, we can do these without necessarily having home rule.
Exactly.
And that home rule would not be adding to?
No.
Okay.
If. Go ahead, John, I'm sorry.
If we were home rule, would we have these tools as well as additional?
Yes, yes, for example, if you wanted to establish a curfew, you could establish a curfew. Something simple like when people walk their dog, you could ban that, that, that the dog has to be on a leash. Then you get into having a zoning commission. Where you have members of the township form a zoning commission, so you can address certain zoning. But you can't, anything that's already on, on, to make it simple, a statute established by the state or the county or the city. Can't change that.
We have to operate by the rules and regulations set forth by the county commissioners of Franklin County, Franklin County, Ohio.
Right.
So my question is this, gentlemen. Should we not put this before the people? And, and also then, well, part of the reason I think we, we meet on the thirtieth is to hear from the people. But also, in my opinion, would we not put this on the ballot? Explain to the people what it is and let the people decide, because we can't make that decision. The only decision we can make is put it on the ballot. If it, if, if it fails, we still have the tools in the toolbox in which Mr. Mazur said. If it passes, we have tools in the toolbox plus other additional ones. As our township grows, as we see growth in the corridor of West Broad Street or call it the old Westland Mall. Having said things, having said things set already precedence in place would make it. Benefit to this township versus us trying to catch up and then trying to need it where we really need it for new businesses coming in. And things of that nature. Because if we don't do it this November, we can't put it on the ballot until next November.
That is true.
So to me, it would be beneficial to let the residents have that decision. And what we're simply doing is saying, is there a need? What is the procedure? And let's get it done because the date is coming pretty close.
All right, well, I, I'm not gonna vote, put it on the ballot without having a, a, a open meeting, an additional open meeting. To the public that they can voice their concerns with home rule, because that's what we said we would do. And with the tools that we have already and the timeframe. Wow. I, I don't know if we have enough, I'm, I'm with Mr. Mazur, I don't know if we have enough time to get it on the ballot for this November.
So by not putting it on the ballot, would that be a, do a disjustice to the people being able to decide on this? Because of our lack of having time?
Well. We can have an open meeting on the thirtieth and see what people wanna, what, what's your guy, I mean, we got, we got a good size of audience today. I'll open the floor for, if you have one statement per person, so we're not here all night. Go ahead.
Most people have no clue as to what home rule is and without a good definition or documentation going to the tenants or residents. They're gonna look at you and think you're purple. I mean, you know what I'm saying? It's like, uh, uh, they don't know what it is. So somehow we need to have the ability to thoroughly comprehend before, before we jump into it with both feet.
Patty?
If you don't have an open meeting or don't have the time for an open meeting. You can do a live with questions Facebook.
True. Yeah.
And let the residents, you know, you announce it, it's, we're having a live Facebook, just like you do these meetings. And you allow the residents to ask their questions, you answer the questions in the forum.
That would be an issue.
Any, any other questions concerned about home rule? Because we have the ability to do nu, um, noise nuisances and stuff like that now.
Right.
That's my thing is, I'd rather have more public input. Before we put it on the ballot and then. To rush it on the ballot this year with everything else that's gonna be on the ballot.
So for one trustee, which is me, you know, and I've seen the need where we could definitely. If we go into the money back area, I know there's a lot that we can do. There's a lot of places and calls that I take and my hands are tied because we don't have the certain tools. Last year at this time, this exact same thing happened, we ran out of time. And it's like, how in the world can I get this on the ballot? So the people can decide and the board does not decide. In my opinion, the board is holding up, the people have the ability to vote yes and no on it.
But you were meeting with Ju, Stevie was meeting with Julie last, if I remember right, after the last meeting. And finding out, did you find out more tools that we do have?
Yes, I mean, like, we can address trucks and cars that are just parked on the street. I'll use the example of box, box truck again. If, if there's a box truck on the street that's been there for days and days and days and days. We, we can pass a resolution and have that removed. Or any other trucks that are just parked on the street in the township and have them removed. Where we haven't used that in the past. If, if somebody builds a fence on township property, somebody constructs a building, which I've seen, on township property. We have the ability to address that where we haven't in the past. And I am pretty certain, for example, I don't know who I was talking to. Somebody parks the cars in the front garden, somebody parks the bulldozers in the front garden, we have the ability to say, you can't do that. We also have the ability to issue fines and citations. We have the advantage of having a police department. When I'm working with Julie right now in municipal court is, what is that finding system? Is it a hundred dollars a day or is it a thousand dollars a day, what is it? But we have these tools and that's why I'm really interested in what the residents want. Are they more concerned that a gutter's hanging low off somebody's house? Or are they more concerned that there's been a box truck parked on the street for two years? That's, that's what I'm trying to get to.
Mr. Mazur, if I may, that's a little absurd because no, no point have we ever looked at that. I mean, it's, it's tools that would be there if it was to want to harm somebody. But also the, the body of the people have the right to be able to put it back on the ballot if someone was abusing home rule.
Right.
To be able to take it away.
Right.
As one trustee, I'm looking at the future where this trust, where this township is going. We're already seeing businesses come in, we had a gentleman that was up here a while ago that is a business that's gonna bring in three point six percent, I believe, off the monies that come in. As we see an influx of what's going to come in this area. We don't have to use every tool in the toolbox. But the fact that if we already have them there, we can implement it depending upon the situation. If we are only looking at the sunshine that we are getting today and not the sunshine that's to come. When the day comes and we don't have that, that's where we end up in a situation trying to catch up. So I personally say it's up to the public to say, would we want that? If we would need to use those tools, that don't necessarily mean that you have to use them.
Right.
I know I've got a home, a tool, I got seven toolboxes, full of tools, I'm a tool person. Doesn't mean I'll use those tools once, twice, every three, four years. But if your situation comes up and I need that two inch socket, I got it.
Sure.
So that's what I. No, I was gonna ask you.
Were you able to find out how much is to put home rule on the ballot?
No, I, I haven't.
They don't tell us that until after we put it on the ballot. Just curious what it's gonna cost to put it on. I, I say we keep, if you're asking me about the meeting on the thirtieth. I, I say we keep it for six o'clock and listen to the people, see what they have to say.
But is that not gonna give us time at all? Either way, even if we voted today for it, I'd still say keep it on the thirtieth. What I'm asking the board today is, let's get it on the ballot during due diligence.
I will not vote for it today without hearing from the people first. That's what we said from the get go, that we'd have open meetings.
So.
So is that what we're being asked to do is?
Well, I'm asking the board, if we're not gonna, here's what I'm asking the board. I'm asking the board, actually making a statement. Why do we have the thirtieth meeting if, even if it comes that everyone says yes, it's not gonna make it?
Okay, so we, we still have seven days to make it.
Mr. Mazur just said even if we make it on the thirtieth, it wouldn't make it on the ballot.
It, no, no, it, it's gonna be tight. Uh, because we'll have to have a resolution written up and then the board will have to come back again and approve that resolution to get it on the ballot so I can get it through the board of elections by August seventh.
So if there is a possibility or if it could make it on there, then I'll keep my mouth shut and we'll listen on the thirtieth. From what I heard a while ago is it wouldn't make it.
Well, I think there have been a lot of things thrown out. First of all, is the meeting on the thirtieth, six or six thirty? Is it gonna be at Sullivan Avenue, is it gonna be here? And then if there, if there is after the thirtieth desire to put that on, we have to meet on Friday the second. To sign something else, so Friday the second would be when we could sign that if it's chosen to do it. And then what date, did you have to have it down nearby?
Saturday.
Okay, so Monday would be the fifth, the sixth, it's Tuesday, so as far as being able to do it. I think it can be done. I'm correct, we're coming in here on Friday the second.
Yeah.
At twelve something to sign something.
We have to.
So if we decide, if we. On the thirtieth, there's a good turnout, there shows people that want home rule, then that'll tell me how I'm gonna vote. If we go there and no one shows up and have no desire to come out in the evening and let us know what they want, one way or the other. You know. That'll be the determining factor for me, if that helps you.
That does.
Did we discuss six o'clock? Well, we originally said six thirty, I don't care which one, doesn't matter to me, I just want the information to be correct, whatever it's gonna be.
So there's a lot of people here, did anyone have a desire one way or the other, yea or nay?
I just wanna know exactly what it is and what else it pertains to besides cars or gutters hanging down. I mean, you know, is it, you know. What else does it pertain to? I guess what I'm saying.
It would be us setting, for one, we'd be setting up a zoning board.
Correctly. Yes, so if I may, sir. Um, there would be a zoning board that would, just like now. The procedure now, I get a phone call, something's going on somewhere. Um, then what we have to do is contact zoning for Franklin County. Franklin County sends out their zoning person and then they go through the procedure. The trustees have no say in it, no nothing. If we have our own zoning board and et cetera, we can't change the laws in which Franklin County has set forth. Alls we're doing is pushing the car forward and being able to. And, and fines, et cetera, et cetera, and instead of Franklin County doing it. We would be the agency that was acting on it.
So like if people park on a street that hasn't been developed, but it has a name, you know what I'm talking about?
I know what you're talking about, yes.
Are you talking about that? If people park in where they're not supposed to be parked?
So what would happen is that we'd come into zoning. Uh, if we have our own zoning board and that would all be handled in-house versus it going to Franklin County. I will tell you that Franklin County has two code enforcements for all Franklin County.
And we'd have to set up a board and no trustee.
I mean, is it anything else that pertains to?
Whatever laws, I don't know all of the laws of that Franklin County has. It's whatever laws that.
The county has.
The county has.
Okay, well, I kinda find it a little bit.
Is there, what information do you as the board have on this? Is there a document that any of us can read that you could pass out to us and you could discuss that?
And I think we'll, we'll have them at the, the June thirtieth meeting. The other thing that you can do is if you Google home rule Franklin County and you would see what, what the definition is, but it's, it's pretty thick.
Is it on your website?
It is not on our website, but it would be on, I believe it's on Franklin County's website. It is not on our website, but it would be on, I believe it's on Franklin County's website, because I've had that paperwork before. We put it on the ballot before, but just as it was said before, some people didn't fully understand exactly what it was.
Yeah. Here's a whole bunch more of them.
Yeah, I haven't, I've never seen it.
Let me, um, I, I just, I'm not sure what I have, what I'm giving you.
And just like anything else, anything good
That says home rule.
potentially could try to be used against you and bad. That's where, like with Franklin County, you can't say, I don't wanna do this anymore. With Franklin Township, you can get the signatures and say, we don't wanna do this no more, put it back on the ballot.
There you go, you got it all. I got some paperwork, ma'am, we'll get you a copy before you leave.
Does anybody else want copies?
Me.
Just two?
Make, make about ten.
Okay.
I think we should have them available on Tuesday morning.
Absolutely.
And that's this Tuesday. Bob, can we use firehouse?
Tuesday?
Absolutely.
So what time are we actually saying?
Six thirty thirty. Let's do six thirty, doesn't matter to me, the topic is, I wanted to verify.
And hopefully all you guys will come to it as well so that we have a good turnout. This will give everyone here an opportunity that wants to take in paperwork home, do their own research and ask questions and see if this is for you.
For the people that are at home, John, do we have the ability to put that information on our website?
Yes, we do.
So they can look it up before Tuesday night if they'd like to?
Yes, I think that would be great. Um, Mr. Mazur, if you could get that on our website, like on the front where they can have a link to click to see, you know, meeting over this, uh.
And also on Facebook.
Yeah.
Can, can Nicole come on here?
She's coming up.
Okay, and I'll get right to you. Can we put something on the front of our Facebook page as well as our, uh, we- our website, you know, home rule, what does it mean for you? Here's information, bring your questions, um, concerns, um, the board trustees is considering putting it on the ballot so that the people know that they have the power of this and they have, they can ask the questions and that we've got the paperwork, if we could put that on there, the pages where they could do that, if that's possible.
Can you put that on Facebook also?
Well, my question is, if we have the live meeting, are they still gonna try to do the Facebook?
No.
So that they could, so it would all.
We would like to do it in person.
It'll be a question.
So it won't be both ways.
Right, because there's a lot of people, if I said show of hands, who don't have Facebook in here, there would be some hands in here that don't have Facebook. So to really, I hate to say this, but to be tangible for everybody to be there in person, I know nowadays it's still, a lot of people just like to do it with their phone, with their tablet, but I think it's important to have it in person.
Yeah. I would agree. We, and that's, um, I, I, yeah, the people need to be educated. Me and my son used to race stock cars.
Okay.
And, you know, my cars were in the garage, but my trailer's set out front. Now, is that something that the township?
Did, did, do you have a tag on that, certainly?
Oh, yeah. Well, see, I mean, like Franklin County, you can't have them.
You cannot do it.
You have to have them like on a concrete pad and a special strong.
Even in Franklin, even now in Franklin Township, you should not be allowed to do it.
Just a regular car trailer?
Yep, because it's part of the Franklin, we, we abide by Franklin County rules, yeah.
Because, I mean, I've done it, I mean, in that way.
If someone would call it, okay, we're talking to one person, not everybody talking at one time, but I'll shut this down. To answer your question, on the, on the zoning rules in Franklin County, as they state now, someone complains to us about it, yes. We, we, we would be, Franklin County would take care of it, or we now, with new evidence, new, um, information that we got, we could handle it. We're not looking for a witch hunt that we were armed with something that we can just go out and.
Drive around and look and look and look. No, I understand that, but I mean, you know, some people, they don't like that stuff.
I'm glad you're asking, that's why I'm sure the way.
That's why a lot of people that I know have moved to Franklin Township.
Right.
Because they say, well, we can have this trailer sitting beside our garage or in front of our garage and ain't nobody gonna say nothing. You know?
In Franklin County, and I can tell you this from experience, in Franklin County, the Franklin County zoning, any trailer can, no trailer can sit in front of your garage if it's out in front of your, of your house. It has to be beside your house or behind your house.
And luckily mine's beside and.
Right.
Yeah, so.
That, that's, otherwise people, people could call in Franklin County or with this new, like I said, new information that was given to us today, people can come into us and say it now and we can, we'll enforce those codes. They're already on the books and we have enforcing powers now too.
Yeah, I understand, thank you.
So I hope that everyone takes some of this home, reads through it, has some good questions and, uh, be more than happy to answer them the best that we can, um, because it's new waters for us too. And as I said, I just think it's nice to be able to, in the future, if it was passed, that we have something economically development in the area, it gives us tools that we could use that we normally would not have.
But then also you guys would, the township would get the money on the fines, am I correct or would that go to the county?
No, uh.
Who does?
Yeah, since we have our own board, it would come to us.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah. So right now, any fines and et cetera, and it's, yeah, exactly.
Moving on now, um.
Good question though.
John, do you have anything?
I do not, I think I split.
I do have one thing and it goes back to last Thursday's meeting real quick. I've had two people approach me about it and I wanna make sure I'm correct. When we call an executive session, the board calls the executive session, session, correct?
Yes. Well, Steve can.
Steve can, Steve can call it, Lindsay can call one, or trustee can call it. Who decides who comes in to the executive sessions?
Well, it would be determined of us, if it, normally, normally there is four of us and our administrator in there.
Yes.
There's no guarantee of who gets to come, other than definitely the three board and definitely, um.
Okay, because I'm, I'm being asked if I did something wrong by having someone not come in.
No, you did not.
And that's what I need, for people to say.
That is what it's called, professional support.
Yeah. Okay, and that's what I'm trying to get to. You called, you called the meeting and you can, you can play within that.
All right. It was perfectly done, right?
Okay, anything else?
Done.
Mr. Mazur, you have anything else? I kinda went on to us, because you had stepped out.
No, sir.
All right, so we're set for the thirtieth, six thirty, firehouse, any questions? If you're watching online, stop by and if you have the information, we'll have it here for you.
Which firehouse, I presume?
Sullivan Avenue.
So if people, if it's on a video, they feel that, thank you very much.
Forty one hundred.
Forty one hundred, Sullivan Avenue. Meeting adjourned.